I should go over the agenda, I got a few things to.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna start with, so, okay. So, I have on the agenda, the elevation certificate permit application that Rudy sent, so. And then I have the Vermont Emergency Management's buyout program that you had emailed about. Um, and then just some other stuff from before, I also have a little correspondence from, um, about the brick. So, is there, what else did you wanna?
I want to talk about the brick briefly, and I needed some advice from you guys on USDA loan issues with the Stafford Road, trying to get that. Just any way we can help.
Yeah, that's me.
I, I just, um, we were supposed to walk with the engineers through town for the scoping study. But that gets postponed to until tomorrow, so. Okay, we won't do that between nine and eleven tomorrow.
Okay. Um, okay, so then why don't we start with this, um, application? That Rudy brought, you could explain a little bit of.
I don't know, this. Elevation certificate application, it's technically the, the floodplain, floodplain permit.
Okay.
So, if a landowner is developing in the floodplain, they are, uh, they should submit that application. And I had sent that previously, and it did not come back at the time, but it came back recently on. So, one of the things, I, I have filled out a lot of the information on it, which identifies where it is on our maps, et cetera. Um, typically, the landowner needs to supply what's called an elevation certificate, which basically a surveyor choose the elevation of, of the, uh, structure.
Of the one that they want to build.
They didn't exist in one in this case, and they would like to raise it. They said two to three feet, and so that's where it becomes important to establish what the elevation of the building actually is, because the floodplain study that we have has the flood elevations in, in the vicinity of that structure, in the vicinity of any structure. So if we have the elevation of the building, then we know what we're working with, and our flood hazard ordinance says that in the special flood hazard area, you can elevate, uh, more than a foot above the base flood elevation, which is the so-called hundred year. Or, or.
And they recommend that, right? They recommend doing at least a foot above, yeah.
At this point, they're really kind of recommending two feet, but our ordinance says one foot.
Rudy, where, can you tell us where, where you thinking about this when it happens? What location?
Yeah.
So we can kind of.
I'm always a little hesitant. But, um, Zoom recordings, but it's, it's on the application.
So they're proposing to raise it two feet over what's in our ordinance and a foot over what's recommended.
Yeah, you know, they, the application said they would like to raise it two to three feet. Um, I don't think they know the elevation of the structure at this point.
Okay.
And, or the base flood elevation, so.
That might be.
Part of the question is whether two to three feet is adequate. Um. It has been a repeat flood location in the past.
So they were flooded previously.
Before they bought it.
Yeah, okay.
It has flooded several times.
But not this last time.
It did flood this last time.
So, I, are we, we asked them to go back and get more information?
Yeah, they, uh, were working on getting an elevation certificate, so, but because we have the floodplain study, we have the base flood elevations along the river, so a landowner doesn't have to get that information on their own, which can be very costly um, to get hydraulic or hydrologic studies done. The last time we got an elevation certificate, uh, Blake Thompson was getting, uh, I think he was getting about four hundred bucks for an elevation certificate at that time, which was pretty reasonable compared with having to commission a hydrologic study. Um.
When you say Thompson, who, what's the first name on that?
Blake.
Oh, it was Blake.
He's retired now, so.
I was just looking at a name here, it was somebody, it was Travis Thompson.
So when will they? I guess I'm just trying to figure out what, what we.
So, I guess. So the, the next steps are that, uh, they would get that elevation certificate, and then we would need to have some sort of hearing to review the information that they've provided. Um, it should get run by the Central Vermont Floodplain Manager as well. Um.
Who's that individual?
Ned Swenberg.
So would they, would we ask Ned to come to that meeting, that hearing?
Uh.
Or does he review what they did?
He typically reviews, uh, the information from it.
That's how that works.
So when I have that, all of that information, I would submit it to him as well as to the board of, where the planning commission is the Board of Adjustment. So my role is, the administrator is to collect the information, and then the Board of Adjustment, uh, would review to see if it complies with the, the requirements of the flood hazard ordinance.
By the time, so, okay, so we're, we're several steps back behind where I thought we would, I thought we were coming tonight to like, let's give it a thumbs up or thumbs down, I quite understand the process, so by the time we convene a hearing, which I'm assuming would have to be warned and all that.
Right, yeah. Typically, we're supposed to act within thirty days of receiving a complete permit.
So this is.
But it's not a complete permit at this time, because it doesn't have the elevation certificate, so it's actually not, we can't really act on it because we don't have that information that we need.
Okay, so once they submit the elevation certificate, then the thirty days begins.
Right.
And then, once that has been received, then are you the person that then gives it all to Ned?
Uh, I would run it by him, and I would add it for us to have a hearing.
So by the time we warn and have a hearing, we would have some information from Ned. If he was like, this is never gonna work, or this looks fine to me, we'd get some feedback from him. So we'd have some basis to make a decision, and we'd just be like, trying to figure out. Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Wonder if they're, yeah, that makes sense, I just, I.
And this is good to start getting on the radar, because, um, I think we're likely to get another one as well, which that one is, uh, very close to the floodway. And so that one, uh, falls into a different portion of our flood hazard ordinance, um, the way we updated the ordinance in two thousand fourteen was a, what they call no rise, so basically any sort of development should cause no rise in flood elevations and no impacts to surrounding properties. And this property would likely be on the edge, or possibly like split by the border between the special flood hazard area and the floodway, so it's probably partly in the, uh, in the floodway. So it, it would actually be a removal, but Ned's feedback was that a removal would be considered development, because it would involve grading. Um. The overall project would be extremely beneficial to flooding function. Um, so he suggested, um, considering whether we might accept a professional engineers signing off on, uh, no rise without a full hydrologic and hydraulic study, um, which if it was development, we would probably want to require.
So that the individual would be paying for that engineer, not the town.
Right.
Yes. Knowing what one engineer gave us for the cost of the work coming up.
What time?
Knowing what one engineer gave us for costs coming up.
For the Stafford Road stuff.
Oh, God, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, it can be very costly. And, and that was the whole advantage of having that nineteen ninety-one study done, because then every landowner that looks for a permit isn't on the hook to have a, a hydrologic study done.
Right, so.
So that's probably a ways down the road, but it's starting into the work, so I think it's good that, you know, we are aware of kind of the, some of the, the particularly the idea of the floodway versus the spot, the special flood hazard area. And it also ties into the conversation about, uh, changes in our flood hazard bylaw as these new maps come through. Um. I might recommend discussion around they're, they're talking more about rather than a no rise thing, which we adopted, and a couple of times that we've discussed it, we've realized it's it almost automatically imposes the burden of getting a hydrologic study done on a landowner, so. Um. It's significant to, there one of the alternatives that has been recommended in, uh, some of the templates for bylaw updates is, uh, what they call no adverse impact.
Hmm.
So, like it on the fairgrounds, we've got a bunch of existing buildings that are in the floodplain already. If you put something in the shadow of one of those, you're not likely to cause adverse impact to other stuff around it.
Or like the drafting site, that doesn't cause, because it's set into the bank, it doesn't cause adverse.
As long as the grade is set level, and, and the stuff is into the bank, then it should be causing no adverse impact. So we could consider doing that instead of a no rise when we get to that point.
So that would mean reviewing the ordinance and making a recommendation to make that change to it?
Right.
Which then, I have to read, I don't know how, how we put that through, that has to go through a select board and a board meeting and all that stuff.
It would need to go through, so the last time we updated in two thousand fourteen, we needed to want a public hearing.
Okay.
And then a select board hearing after that.
It might, might be worth doing. I can see the advantages of not tying people up, you know, there's no adverse impact, having that verbiage in there.
Yeah, and you know, a lot of the.
Would save a lot of good jumping.
Wisdom, which I think the article that you sent was really interesting, and I think is showing some shifting, shifting thinking around it, but in the past, it's always been, you know, we should be infilling in villages. Um, but many of our villages are very close to waterways, so it becomes tricky, so adverse impact allows ways to do infill development without needing to go through the hoops of no rise.
Well, and we also want to encourage people to not circumvent a permitting process and be because they're worried about this no rise thing and getting hidden fees and everything, like you, we just want to make it easy for people to do the right thing, I think.
Exactly.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's worth, I think it's worth pursuing, I think we should keep it on our notes.
Revisions to our bylaw anyway, in order to officially adopt the new maps, um, which I, I think are gonna be worthwhile adopting.
I think every meeting I write in bold letters, review, read flood hazard ordinance. I did it again to this one, so, yeah, all right. Um.
Well, I don't know about you, but when I have concrete examples of what this stuff means, it helps.
Oh, sure, yeah, it helps, really helps, yeah. And not to, you know, use specific people's examples in a public hearing, but just to, I think it would help for the general population, instead of hearing words like no adverse, no rise, blah, blah, just to say, for example, here is a house that, you know, show what it, what it looks like, and um, okay, well, I guess we don't know if by next month we would have.
I don't, I can contact the landowner again and follow up and see what kind of progress they're making on getting an elevation certificate, that's, that's the hang up right now.
I think the big thing is that we need to be cognizant that he's gonna be approaching us for the thirty day. Then we've got to deal with this.
Well, it, the other question I have is, do you know what the mourning periods are for these kinds of hearings?
Uh.
Sometimes they're like a week.
Check on that, I don't think it's that long, I think it's like two days or something, if they're.
Two or four days, yeah.
Eight hours or something.
That's why I was thinking, like, is it possible that we could even have the hearing by our next meeting?
Yeah, it, it might.
Okay.
Be conceivable, and.
Just out of curiosity, how did these folks know to do this application? Did they?
I had reached out to them when they bought the property.
Okay.
Because it had a previous history. Now, I, that I really hope that this was made clear on the front end, because this property has flooded repeatedly.
And did they know that? I mean, I'm just, I'm not picking on them, I'm just trying to think, like, do is that what you're supposed to do, is think about every single person who could potentially do renovation and be impacted, and you want to, you know, or is there a way to kind of?
There, there's.
People just know when they buy a home?
And there's getting more. It's getting, so, there's a couple of things going on, is that, uh, the insurance companies have gotten much more interested in this at this point, and they're putting the squeeze on realtors to make it clear, and so they're requesting a lot more information. Um, I have just recently found out about a company that appears to be providing risk mapping services to a lot of the major realty companies at this point, so. On. I think, you know, that's becoming much more standard to have realtors make that apparent in the process of selling. It's not clear to me the process on this one. You know, I want to see this property had been very, very, very close to a buyout previous to being sold. And, um, got the old landowner backed out at the last minute.
All right, well, we'll just keep it poking along, and if we need to spring to action and become a, a Board of Adjustment, we will do that.
Hmm.
Sounds good, um. Yeah, I don't know, there's a whole lot more we can do at this stage of the game.
So what about pursuing this idea of the no adverse impact change? I mean, is that something we should sort of proactively?
Yeah.
And do we have to tighten that a little?
But you've repeatedly written it down, and I've made notes to that, should just find the highlight the exact wording that I think we need to address, so I've mentioned that I think we need to address the official map portion, I think we should re- review as a group how we feel about that. No rise versus adverse impact. It's also likely that if we adopt the new maps that will be coming from USGS and FEMA, they will not include a floodway. So, we probably are gonna need to think about how we deal with that aspect of it.
So is this something we can review as a group and discuss and decide upon before the new maps come out, or do we need to kind of do it all at the same time and we?
I think it would be worse, I think we can start to review the language around it even without the new.
I agree, I think the new maps are out there a little ways, we might want to.
Is thinking.
Address this.
Not just we can get done before the map.
Coming winter, um, but I don't think we need them to, to be considering the language and the likelihood that the floodway, I, I know for a fact that if we adopt those maps, it won't have a floodway.
Okay. All right, well, as much as we can do prior to the release of these maps, because then we're gonna be looking at that, I think we should do what we can.
Get in gear.
Yeah, I do, I think it then gets us all thinking in the right.
As we discussed before, it's meeting monthly, this timeframe seems big at first, and then you realize it goes really fast when you're meeting once a month.
All right.
And I mentioned previously that Geo, one of the, uh, who used to be Hurricane Flaps, um, is now the Floodplain Administrator for Sharon. Um, and he, he has been interested in broader conversation between different towns that are going to be dealing with these map updates at the same time. And he's thinking of proposing and sharing that they actually adopt the five hundred year. The old language was the five hundred year floodplain, rather than the hundred year, um, it's now called the two percent, uh, annual exceedance probability, or the, the point two percent. Apparently, we have the hundred year as the base flood elevation that most stuff gets measured against as to the applicability of the flood hazard ordinance. He'd like to see Sharon adopt the five hundred year, which would be the, the two percent probability, or the point two.
Is it, isn't that going in the wrong direction now? Shouldn't we be adopting like the ten year flood? No, because it's, I'm not understanding, but.
The uh, point two percent is gonna be, is gonna be higher.
Okay.
The, the flood levels will be higher, um, and so he'd like to see development stay hard that.
Okay, I agree with him.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense.
I was, I was saying with you, I thought. That's going in the wrong direction, but, okay, so it's just the way it's.
Way it's worded, yeah.
Worded, but we're all thinking the same thing.
Ten year flood, which would be the, you know, ten percent annual exceedance probability, they call it an AEP now, it's the percent probability that that flood is gonna occur in any given year, so there's a point two chance, percent chance of a five hundred year flood occurring. There's a one percent chance of a hundred year flood, and there's a ten percent chance of a ten year flood occurring in any given year. So that ten year flood would be lower. Does that make sense?
So, though it still sounds.
No, it's important.
So, what, what is it now in Sharon? This is an example.
It's the base flood elevation is that one percent chance, the hundred, the hundred year flood. There's a one percent.
And he's saying now make it a two percent chance, or?
He's saying make it a, a, uh, keep development out of the area that there's a point two percent chance.
I get it when I think about it, because a five hundred year flood has a chance of being a huge monster.
But in some places.
It's just the way it's worded sounds hard to wrap.
Keep development out of more areas that will be if they are not already in the floodplain. Okay.
I get it when he, when he explains it.
I'm just gonna hold it right there, because I.
The, the lower the chance, the higher the flood.
Okay. All right, I, I, I'm hanging on by thread, but I got it, I got it, okay, I got it.
And they keep trying to change the language to make it more intuitive, and none of it's.
It doesn't ever work, yeah, it's not achieving that. Okay, okay, all right, well, so, look, see, was there more on that for tonight, or?
I don't think so, I think we could, unless anybody had.
No, I think we just have to actually bring some stuff and think about this a little more, and like.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting, that we.
Look at the language, I think we have to like actually all look at the ordinance.
Yeah, encourage the ones who are in here to look at it.
Yeah.
We'll come back.
Ready to, ready to talk about it.
Some highlighted text that we should particularly focus on.
I think you may have, I'm trying to remember, anyway. Um, okay, so I have this, Brenda, this is you, that you put the emergency management buyout program, so do you wanna?
And I'm not really sure how much since the flood is still available for funding, because there's been freezes on a lot of stuff. But the, I just wanted to keep putting it out there, and I don't know how we reach out, like Rudy, trying to reach out to the people about this flood, and tell them there's the buyout program, whether it be that house or the future woman, because they were also buying out potential, which was a new one for me, I keep thinking, and here we are, again, being recorded, but like if you're going to the dump and say there's another piece there that possibly could be asked if they want to sell, I wonder if that's eligible for a buyout, and whether a solar system would be eligible to not have an adverse impact versus stuff. It's the first time I've seen a buyout where they do potential.
So there, it, the buyout would cover property that potentially.
But we almost got, we almost ended up with the buyout for the pieces across from the renovation bill.
Right.
I missed out on that by a few weeks, I think. But if you go down the river, or go up the river just a little bit, so I, I guess I don't want to say anymore about it, but I just want to put it out there, and we don't act, we don't I guess we don't have the drive to really act on it.
Um. So, I mean, you would.
And we also need to keep letting the people know.
That's what I was gonna say.
In town.
You said, should we let the people know?
How do we let people, you know, I guess the quarterly, the deadline on the quarterly, I believe, is today, we could put it in. You know, I guess the quarterly, the deadline on the quarterly, I believe is today. We could put it in there quickly. Again, reminding people who are in floodplain, if they ever do wanna sell these opportunities only. Door opens and then it closes. And they need to be cognizant that it's open right now and it's gonna close.
And then what's the cycle like usually?
You, I was surprised they actually opened it back up.
It's when a flood comes.
So it's not, it's not like every year, no, the month of May, okay, so this is.
So when the flood happens, then they look at the properties and go, oh.
You know, maybe we should encourage this again. I mean, these people are like, for instance, if we use Chelsea. You know, some of the houses that are in floodplain that got flooded out, most. Folks chose not to do a buyout. They wanna stay there. They don't need insurance.
Did anybody choose to do a buyout in Chelsea?
Yeah, there's been a couple of buildings that are being demolished.
Oh, the barn behind the um.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. But anyway, so just so we let the townspeople know here that this potential is there.
Do you know when it's gonna close?
I would have to look in there and I, we've been moving on to obviously the flood. A lot of my meetings have been around damage.
So maybe instead of the quarterly, which is kind of. Uh, we could just put it in front porch floor or something like that, Cambridge.
Is that, the quarterly is a better one, cuz I think it gets out to all the present landowners. Uh, do you know what time the Janet closes that? Is it just today?
She had extended the deadline to today.
Do you want notification from her?
Yeah.
I I need to, I don't, haven't been getting. Yeah, I need to email her and say, just please put me on so I know to write something.
Well, we still have the rest of today, right, to get something in. If we wanted to give a quick. Notification about buyout possibilities to go on, contact um. One of us. I don't think you're gonna get much right now, but I just feel like we, it's our obligation to make sure it's out there.
Yeah, I get in some way that I wonder if. That kind of notification. Yeah. I don't know that it would do any harm, but um. You know, the the process is complicated enough that. I think just tossing it out to landowners. Probably isn't, isn't gonna go real far. You know, the reality is we have a a limited number in this town. Or the repeat.
And they don't wanna, they don't want to. I know I've talked to.
Understandably, people don't want to until it's.
Then they.
Well, we just, we bring it up.
Yeah.
It's fine with me.
But you know, I think. The fact that you're aware of it and you're making us aware of it and these kind of conversations. Keep happening more are really important because. You'll have those conversations. We'll we'll have those conversations with people and. In in my experience, a lot of them are, the most effective ones are are informal. You know, not in a public setting, not.
I would agree with you. One other person I know has been an informal approach. I don't think he'd ever approached this group.
Yeah. And to have more people aware that these opportunities exist is is really important and. They they are coming up more frequently. It was somewhat surprising that this reopened, but. It totally makes sense that it reopened and for better or worse. We're probably gonna see it reopen again.
And and in hindsight, I have to say, I'm a little nervous about, in some respects, putting it out there to the general public. Because a lot of doors have also been shut quickly because of the cost of the flood. And FEMA's expenses. Right now, it's not just us. It's Hawaii. It's all over there. They're feeling the pinch and they're closing a lot of doors. They opened before the flood.
Do you think we would wanna make an offer?
Part of me is wondering and I'll bring up a few other things in a minute on the next. I'm struggling with.
Does the select board know about the buyout program for the moment?
It's been brought up to them, but it's been brought up years ago. That's a good one to bring up.
Recently.
That's a good one to keep on their, in their mind.
They were engaged in the previous conversation.
But they've changed people and.
Because. And I don't know if. Things will change with the increasing frequency of these things, but in the past. For a buyout to happen, the town had to become the eventual owner of the property. So. They they've been aware of it because when it was discussed, the town was gonna need to.
Is that still the case, that the town would be the?
Does the town have to be or?
Yes, I believe it still is for the most part right now. I'm seeing some cracks in that.
I think some nonprofits and conservation groups can.
Opportunities that may.
You have to sign, you have to sign a agreement.
But right now, involve at least one. In Zopbridge that. Isn't gonna happen, cuz the the town is not willing to to do that. They've done, they did a number of them after Irene. And right now, they don't wanna do another one. They don't wanna own it.
And so I think I maybe I ask this, but we don't know when the window shuts.
No, and I could look that up. I sort, like I said, my mind went on to other things cuz the flood happened.
But typically would be several months that it's open, just to.
Yeah, it well, it was a surprise. You know, I get all these notifications. And I don't get a chance if something else happens. I don't get a chance to really go back and read it clearly.
Well, my only thought was just that.
But I can find out.
Select board knows so that they, like, they're the people that we should know, but they should also know in case.
Opportunities come up.
They just hear about it. So I mean, I, when is the next meeting? Week? Next Tuesday, unfortunately.
Last week, so it would be.
Well, I can either send an email or just, you know, just, I just think it should just like, hey.
Yeah, just check, check, like, remember you guys. This periodically opens up and then shuts.
I mean.
In. That that's this, that's this particular emergency funding, so. There are other programs um. And and you know, this stuff is fluid to some extent, so the. Blood resilient communities funding that we were looking at. Previously extended beyond the immediate impacts of the emergency funding. The hazard mitigation. Well, program grants um have had extended windows. I think, you know, as these events keep happening more. Often Vermont Emergency Management. Is now got a number of new staff people that are being charged with. Trying to keep these programs open longer and create more opportunities.
They're gonna be eventually just permanently open. I mean.
No, I think the money's gonna, well.
When the money dries up.
Yeah, these events that are happening are.
Thing, you know, it's.
Between the war in Ukraine and, yeah, our events, we're gonna. We're gonna start putting a stopper on some of the monies.
And it would, just like you were saying, when. It becomes obvious to somebody. It's just not working anymore.
Yeah.
Then is when.
It's too late.
Willing. Decided. Level when it. Is more beneficial to put the money into doing these buyouts than it is to keep. Repairing things over. We become, keep these programs open. Nobody wants to do them, but.
Well, they find out like one of the people in town, they get turned down from FEMA.
Yeah. Okay. Was there more on that or you wanted to talk about brick after that? You, okay, so maybe you and I have the same thing, so go ahead and.
So. We started on this brick grant for engineering and we gave an area. That we wanted to look at and I don't, what I'm driving up to is, I don't know if there's any way we can help the town. With what we know about the brick. So Mary Ann started it. And when we designated the area after we started for the brick rant. Part of Stratford Road that we had designated started to slide. I don't know how many, I know Rudy sort of probably listened in on a lot of our meetings, some of our meetings. And then when we had the flood. It extended way up the road. You know, what determines under the flood, flood, whether we get some help from FEMA on that, I don't know. And then, of course, there's other issues further up, but those weren't part of the brick. So today I asked Mary Ann to really kind of touch base with them again. You know, it seems like the brick is sort of. You know, taken a lot longer than I thought and I know she's put a hold on it. We got the message, Mary Ann reached out.
Okay, you saw that too. You're CC'd on that. That's what I was gonna bring up, yeah.
Yep. But when you, when you look at that, one of the things that bothers me, they said that they're, they got sort of a freeze for immediate needs. Is the slide that we have that's extended up, should that be included in immediate need? So I was earlier when you came in, that's what I was trying to determine. If we lost that road. I don't know how many of you are aware uh. Historically, when we have a flood like that, we lose Route one ten north and south. It it's just the way it goes. For us in the fire department. And me as an emergency, when I'm with them, we're trying to figure out how to get ambulances and services. To everybody and check on them. And we're usually frozen right out of Route one ten and we have to do roundabouts. During this flood, we lost our roundabouts going in that direction to go to Chelsea slowly one after the other. Most of, to get to North Cambridge, we have to go up the Stratford Road. I always had to drive up the Stratford Road and then come down as long as we could hang on to the Foundry Road. As it got more treacherous as we went along. And Rod, Rod was, Rod works with us and he tries to keep one or two of those open. We can't get a fire truck. Once we go up and around, we can't get fire trucks or big equipment. Over any of the bridges up there. So it's a passenger car. Getting in the North Cambridge. And so for a while there, we didn't have access for fire. And probably a little tentative even for ambulance. Very tentative for ambulance without really going around. So these are the things we're working on. So to go back, the Stratford Road is kind of critical. If it becomes worse or slides in. Going back to that note, when I asked Mary Ann and she's, I think she's just like. She's just getting inundated with this FEMA stuff, so she almost doesn't wanna hear more from me. About it, but those of us who started the brick. Should we point out to the woman who's running this that this is a critical road for us? Do we take this opportunity and not just put it on? My, I'm feeling is that I don't wanna have Mary Ann feel like she's the grants administrator. She's not really. Helping us with our policy or help. We got an engineering uh. Estimate back that the select board is going to do for the first slide is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's not repairing it. Nor is it looking at the rest of it that just slid during the flood. We have no idea if there's gonna be any help. Where Rod keeps throwing out like a million dollars.
So you're saying a hundred and twenty for that first, the first part. Oh, just for the.
Uh, just for the engineer, not the repair.
Okay. All right.
So I'm half wanting to reach out. And I think more of a personal call.
To Lisa.
To Lisa and whether it be by you and I'm running this by you guys. I I think we, we can't put it all on Mary for the, for the direction that our town is trying to go on what we were. She's writing these grants. She's not trying to advocate for us the same way. Uh, when you're reading that, are you reading the same thing? Should we point out to her?
Well, so her, her response to Mary Ann, I could just read it, cuz in whatever.
That would be helpful.
So Mary Ann, Mary Ann wrote to her and just said. I have not received any additional requests for information from FEMA. I wanted to check in and see if you had any update on this process. We have experienced slides on Stratford Road due to the July flooding event. As we identified in our brick application, we anticipated this road would be a major concern and that has come to fruition. We need a long-term plan for this road and that is part of what we were hoping to do with the brick grant. Bring in an engineer to help determine next steps for the long-term improvement of this road to prevent future issues. So that's what Mary Ann wrote. And then Lisa's response was. Um, all FEMA funding, including announcement of awards, is paused under INF immediate needs funding. FEMA cannot award any projects until the INF is listed. How does INF affect brick funding? INF will delay the fiscal year twenty twenty three brick notice of funding opportunity. As well as new brick obligations regardless of the notice of funding year. So.
So basically, that sounds to me like it needs to go in the emergency.
I think it's in the wrong pool.
I think it is too, and and this happened after we first submitted, knowing we, it hadn't slid, nothing had slid. When we started, so they might have done that.
See them as being mutually exclusive. You know, the brick grant was basically the planning. Thing to assess and that hasn't changed. It's stressed. The criticality of that, that road. That's no reason that it shouldn't be in. In any pools for immediate needs because it is an immediate need at this point. I I don't.
Yeah.
They're mutually exclusive.
Well, I thi- and I think you're right. I think that's kind of what she's sort of alluding to, like, the brick grant is. You happen to apply for it for the Stratford Road and like it's.
But ours is on a back shelf.
Hearing from that is that we need to put a priority of getting the Stratford Road in. To whatever immediate funding.
Right, it's not, we're not gonna get the funding.
So what.
Brick's been paused.
Okay, so I I would talk to another, there's so many FEMA people right now, my head is spinning. You know, and they're all trying to help. But they're all very confusing. They're reaching out to myself, Rod. But a lot to me. And one of the guys just told me uh, day before yesterday, he said, go after everything you can rattle every door. And so I'm wondering whether we should rattle the door on this and say. We just gotta let you know this is a critical road for us to get fire trucks and emergency vehicles to parts of town during a flood. And also. Stratford is gonna get closed down. At some point here, pro- part of the repair is gonna be extensive. And then the other one, um, I don't, you might have overheard this or not, but. Whitney Hill Road, Route one ten's gonna get closed down, like for a short, much shorter period of time. And it looks like the two of them may have been close to one another. Which is really gonna isolate a portion of our town.
I agree that we should, that's the right thing to say. I'm just not sure Lisa, as she's not, I don't know that. In her, you know, role as brick person, like she's not able to release any funding for us or do.
But why did she say it was on a, on a back, on a shelf? There was a.
Because bricks tied, tied to the.
But they awarded some of them that were more, more uh, priority than ours. Because ours hadn't, nothing had happened back.
I think it's the release of funding. She said all FEMA funding is paused under INF. So, I mean, I, it wasn't clear to me, I don't think we were gonna be receiving funds the end of this year anyway, but I think it's just.
I don't understand in a way, I feel a little frustrated with this brick process, cuz they told us. There was a very large pot of money in ARPA. That the government was going to use. My understanding rumor has it now. That a lot of that has been being spent on the flood.
Right.
Cost. So it may not even, once we get through, once we get through with the brick, we may have nothing there anyway.
Well, so maybe the thing to do is just to go back to Lisa's email and just set up a call, because I feel like. It's just, there's a lot of questions here and we could just say to her, totally get it that you've had to just kind of put brick on pause, but. You know, the road that we identified for brick scoping. You know, the road that we identified for brick scoping study. Is now actually a critical issue for us and we need. Funding for it to repair, who, who, are you the person that like? Helps us with that, or could you?
Can we make sure that everyone is notified that it would be brick, whether the next one I'm gonna suggest, anything we can do to help the town? What happens with that first slide, it was pre-flood, so it's not a FEMA thing, this is on us.
Right, this is a separate.
So when we go to have the second part that slid during the flood. We're not even sure FEMA is gonna help us, so we need an engineer again. For the rest of it.
And then further up the road too?
Uh, there are slides further up the road that I think are gonna be managed, Rod is working on managing them. The one that's gonna be shut the road right down will be the bridge. And that's gonna get pulled out. And.
The bridge up By Point Hill Road?
Yes, so anybody wants fuel, fire trucks, we have to do it from another direction. For four, three to four weeks.
I'm happy to email Lisa. If you want me, I mean, and just because I had a call with her once and we've had some, I know you do too, but.
No, I'm, I'm happy to get some help on this, this is why I'm reaching out to all of you.
If that's okay, why don't I email Lisa and just say like what you've said and just say, okay, we, I understand about the brick. But now we've got this other problem that sort of superseded the brick thing.
And, and stressed her emergency.
Yeah, I will, and I'll just say, could we either talk about it or like maybe you could point me in some direction, like how do we access sort of? Immediate need funds, like we.
This is gonna ta, this is gonna hammer our town.
Anything I should add to that? Any.
Once it slides right in, they'll be all over us.
And is, are we going the right direction with FEMA, I mean, I'm, is this, this isn't V-Trans or?
Um, V-Trans is Rod's working. His project. I think anything we can get for help right now, V-Trans is working on grants, I don't think they have all of it yet. Because they think the repair work, what have you heard, I've heard anywhere for two hundred and fifty thousand.
And I could be off about this, but I think part of what I'm hearing from this is the difference between state and federal, so. FEMA's, I think it's federal dollars that funnels through. The state, V-Trans, Vermont Emergency Management. And that's what's been paused because FEMA has now had a greater need for immediate needs funding.
There's also.
And this is just my perception that we need to be talking to the feds at this point. And that might be worth asking. Explicitly, is, is this what we're hearing from this?
Well, let me interject though. When you have a pre-flood slide. FEMA, FEMA is not involved. On that one, this is why it is, it is state and federal, but which part FEMA will buy in on. What they've told us to do is to repair it and then they'll consider where they're gonna help us. And what, what throws Rod off on that, he's gotta work with both the state and the feds.
Right.
He's had to work with both. And I've been. The, the FEMA seems to be contacting me. And so I've been directing, because Rod doesn't do email.
Has Lisa been contacting you or you've had somebody else?
No, I have, well, her bosses have been sending me emails. So Emily Harris and all those people have been sending me emails, but. So it's been very complicated, this is why I forgot to get the Alon, because it's very complicated and Rod is really, you know, he's. He's getting it, but it's a lot of work and it's gonna be very costly, but that first one, Rudy is not FEMA.
Right, so then.
And then maybe reaching out for.
We should be talking to V-Trans about, but.
It's gonna directly.
Whole, well, it's not V-Trans, it's Vermont Emergency Management that's telling us that. It sounds like they're on hold. But those kind of funding flows are helpful to understand because if we, if we can't go through FEMA. It, it's likely that we're gonna have to put together. Multiple funding sources. For different parts of that.
Yes, you're getting, you're getting it, what I'm trying to say is the next piece slide next to it could be under FEMA.
Right.
And that's what we're going on, and then as we go up the road, we're probably got paid under FEMA. Then we got the bridge where I got the head guy with the three-piece suit, can't remember his name. He like really blessed that one for us. But for some reason, we can't, they've been telling Mary Ann. There's no guarantees, you go ahead and do it and then give us the bill, but like Rod said, I can fix it my way. Or I can fix it.
Right, that, what are the specs on, on fixing it, because if they don't like the way that it's been fixed.
They're not gonna do anything to the town, we don't, we can't afford it, Rod's good, Rod would try to make it hold for now, he'd fill in the crack. He'd try to hold it in the next flood, the next rainstorm. The whole rest of it may go and if the state declares an emergency gets accepted, maybe it would be. So he's either going to ca, it's either gonna cost. Say three hundred thousand, or he's gonna get it done for fifteen thousand. And that's where we're stuck, and that's where I'm trying to help, so this is where if we can reach out, I think to Lisa.
Let me just start with Lisa and see if she can at least draw a roadmap for where we should be.
You can't fix everything, I'm not asking you to look at everything else, I'm just trying to give you a glimpse of what Rod's going through right now. Trying to, um, round all this up. The other one that came in that I was talked to was, um, the one I sent you, and I might have only sent the two of you. USDA. And Rudy, you're right, I noticed that too when it got sent from Emily Harris that it. Had a date that was already gone by, like September seventh. But why did she send it to me, and I can call her tomorrow. And clarify that, she doesn't, you can make boobos like that unless they extended it.
For, you know, looping Mary Ann and.
What's that?
That's the kind of thing, you know, it seems, if it, if it's not too hard a thing for us and, and. Before we give it to Mary Ann.
Find out if it's real.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can do that tomorrow. But I wanted you guys to, you know, I'm running around today and I just wanted you guys to take a quick look at that and see what you thought. And my guess is they get some kind of extension on it, on the USDA, but it looked like it was road repair flood.
It, it looked applicable, but the dates were very confusing because.
But then they also said halfway down, if you read it, it's something about, again, some monies have been frozen for some engineering. Yeah, that. It was partway down. Oh God, you know, we just keep hitting. Okay, no, under technical assistance. It would be, uh, sponsor administrative and design expenses. With the scope of damage in the state, Vermont NRCS may not have the capacity to provide designs and sponsors. Maybe required to contact the engineering services. NRCS can provide TA funds to help cover some of the cost. You know, if we had to get another engineer, which right now Rod, Rod's so frustrated with that cost. I mean, they basically are gonna move on site, wanna drill and live there until it's done. With a hundred and twenty or forty thousand.
That's why I cross so much, that's why.
They're pretty much there. Rod wishes we never had got a hold of. An engineer. And making a living.
Alright, well. Let's just keep.
And here's another one, here's another one for a suggestion. That I could use your input on, because I'm, I, I don't want to mistreat these people, the new people that bought below me. One of the possibilities for Rod. Is to move the road over a bit. And part of it may or may not even be on their land, but if he went up further and moved the road over all the way up. To Recreation Road, I'm not talking about a lot, I think he's got like fifty feet. Something like that, it may be more, he's a little worried about cutting into the bank too much, because then that. I do know it was the original sand pit there, I was told by LB Bowen and a bunch of people, so they shouldn't hit ledge. But my question would be, what's fair of asking those folks that just recently bought that land? And they're receptive to helping the town. And I don't know whether you were talking about a couple of years worth of dump tickets. It's not land that's usable to them, but it's still their land. That we're asking to cut into, and it may be a little more than what we're initially thinking. But it still is not real usable land. What do you think?
And they're not.
Your town for raw land is twenty seventy-five an acre. That typically gets graded by multipliers. The accessibility, the steepness, the usability.
So you know what that is?
Knock that down. My guess would be, you'd be looking at. Probably less than half of that and thinking about similar pieces of land tend to grade out. At like point three five to point four. Be eight hundred dollars an acre.
So if we offered them a couple of years worth of dump tickets, that actually might be.
Well, you could see, can't we see first if they would just be. Good members of the community and for them it might not be an issue to just donate that land.
Well, the select board was receptive when I said it half kiddingly, but serious, you know, there should be some.
Do we think it's about?
It's just that they're not gonna ask for, they're not gonna be going in trying to. Rudy is saying they're not doing that.
Yeah.
But they would certainly accept those tickets.
Right, yeah, well, that would be a nice gesture, but.
Overall, cost of a project like that, it, it's a drop in the bucket to. Reimburse the landowner at a reasonable rate.
Right.
Just my own thought.
To reimburse the landowner.
Eight hundred dollars an acre, you know, I, I don't think you're. Talking probably a tenth of an acre.
Depends how far up Rod ends up. Because there are entities that they're, that are trying to convince them, why don't you go all the way up to Recreation? Yeah, it's eight hundred bucks.
Eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
In terms of. Saving a rug.
And I think like you said, it's just it, in the big picture, it's a drop in the bucket, there's like no reason why the town couldn't offer. To purchase.
And, and I, I don't know enough about it, but that's the kind of thing that seems like it would be able to be built into. Grants or some of these funding sources as part of the project costs.
Has this been done before? Has Rod ever had to?
I know that from looking at and from working with a survey that roads have deviated and gotten really close to. Redway match, and sometimes even over, over time with erosion. And I don't know how much.
I mean.
I know they've asked Lauren Dirk years ago if they could take that corner off on Hoyt Road, right where the bridge has to go out, because it's so dangerous there. And he's just, they offered him money repeatedly, and he repeated and said, no way. So the town has approached landowners.
There is precedent for offering to buy, compensate for loss of land.
Yeah, Bun Brown used to.
And then does the date get reflected that, I mean, does that get changed eventually?
I think it probably, in, in an ideal world, that, that would be part of the process. Um, but I. Probably is up to the landowner to negotiate that agreement as well.
Yeah, they're going to ask the landowner to come, come down here to a select board meeting. And we were just. I, like I said, they're very receptive to help in the town, because it's not prime land.
I, I would, like, personally, I would prefer to see more of a. Like logical contractual process instead of a. Thanks, a donation, I mean, which I think is a nice way to do it, but I just envision this being. It would be nice to have a process that's established for when this comes up the next time, and the next time, and the next, I mean, given like.
Struggle I have with the world we live into, and I'm just envisioning with that.
I mean, I.
Process that should take place at a kitchen table and not.
I mean, that would be my, that would be my response if we were sitting at my kitchen table, but if we're here as planning permission, I guess I'm thinking like.
Oh, it just, well, because it sets a precedent, right?
Not really, they've done, they've done this before, the Bun Brown, when he approached. The Dirkys, it was done in the backyard. Request was done. No, but I'm being asked. By the landowner, what, I think, what I think. So anyways, I'm just throwing it out there. If anybody has any, I, I get what you're saying, it should be more, maybe a financial.
I mean, just like the fact that we're having more and more floods, we're having to address this more and more, I feel like that's gonna impact roads more, and so. Whereas it used to be like. You know, you could name the people that there was an agreement, a gentleman's agreement made, you know, now like. Maybe it's just more and more people and it's gonna be harder and harder to say, I mean.
I get it, I'm curious.
You should be proud of me as the emergency management director, than I'm thinking, thinking direly. I've learned well, Brenda.
Oh God, I gotta think highly of you.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of it, I'm thinking catastrophically, anyway.
Okay, well, thank you, thanks for your input.
Okay, well, this has been a lot, so I.
So USDA, I'll, I will find out, I will call Emily Harris tomorrow or email her and ask her if that is. Got a window of open, if you do notice it, it looks like they're gonna be moving really quick, but then I can pass it on to Mary Ann. And to let you know, by the way, on that first slide. That is on us before, pre-flood, if I call it that, like Noah pre-flood. We are getting, um, V-Trans has acquired quite a bit from other grants to start on that. It's just that we don't know how it, it may not be the total amount. By any means. So I don't give you incomplete information. And I'll get back to you, or I'll get, I'll get hold of Mary Ann about this USDA.
Alright, I'll call up with Lisa and let everyone know what I can arrange to discuss with her.
Yeah, and what's happening is Rod's got a pretty, I think he's got a pretty good handle on the rest of the town. Unlike many towns around. He's really, you know, he's, they've done great. This is Stratford Road.
They've done a fantastic job, you can tell when we cross out of Tumbridge and into surrounding towns.
Or listen to other people.
Immediately, yeah.
Yeah, is Broadbrook ever gonna open again?
I don't know, that road disappeared.
I, I.
E-Hill is the same way, it's like gone.
Is it, yeah.
NRCS people part of any of these site visits? Is they, that woman was at the Chelsea town hall. And she was the one that I had talked to about this program in particular.
The USDA, that, um, woman who was in the center.
Yeah.
Yeah, she seemed like she really had her act together, and I was thinking, I wish I'd talked to her too. But Tim Baker was there in front of us and really latching on, and he was, he was the go-to FEMA guy. I just wish FEMA could give us a little more, um, positiveness.
I'm looking at this again and it's, you know, saying. I, I know dealing with NRCS on, on other stuff, that their programs typically have pretty tight guidelines. And this says sixty days after the watershed event. To us, to submit assistance request letters. To us, to submit assistance request letters. Emergency declaration. As the threshold, we would be well off past sixty days.
Yeah, and I don't wanna give us more work than, than we need, we have a lot of paperwork.
Nervous this program, cause it's, I feel like it just stretch anyway and. I don't know, I, before putting it in Mary Ann's hands, I would just wanna make sure that this is feasible.
How about I run, when I get hold of Emily Harris, pretty high up in your organization, very high up. And I ask her.
She's the one that forwarded this.
Yes, and I think she got approached by the FEMA guy that was trying to encourage me to look at this. And this might, might be, although it looks like she sent it out to all the EMDs, which she would do if she knew I had a need. But I'll ask her if this would be helpful for us. I'll tell her the situation. Is it still?
More specific about the question, I, I'd wanna know that this program is still open.
Well, that'd be the first thing, that's all, I have no other questions.
That's like it, that's the big question.
You send this to us, is, does that mean it's still open and then would it fit what we're looking for? And Chris Bump. You know, maybe he's the one from V Trans that has been trying to get that. First slide, pre-flood slide. Money sewed up.
Yeah, this, this is gonna be federal. But, you know, I think let Chris Bump run with that one.
We need more than what Chris Bump. Supposedly Rod has hinted that we're gonna need more than what Chris Bump has managed to gather so far.
But then you're gonna run into.
The parameters, yeah. I, I know, is, none of it's easy. I just finished the fifty fifty grant here and I.
You know, I think a lot of these federal dollars right now are tied to that event. So that's why Chris Bump's working on getting the funding elsewhere. Where the, the pre-flood slide.
And Emily Harris may know Chris Bump has already reached out on the Stratford Road for USDA funding, she probably couldn't. Tell me quickly. Okay, I just sort of bounced it off the walls with you guys.
Alright, I think we should wrap it up unless there's anything.
So you said the walk is tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow, we're meeting, parking, people are parking here, yeah, so engineer guys suggested that everybody. Park down at the Tembridge General Store and I was like, there's no parking there. I mean, I, I just said, I think it would be.
Are you walking all the way um, to Recreation Road?
No, I think the, the plan was to um, walk the village section. The immediate village section and then to drive out to Recreation Road, so.
So you know, you're, you're gonna have to add in to the grant to get that sidewalk there, maybe if you've got grants to pay for that, you can repair the road.
Exactly, they're gonna slice away that bank to put a sidewalk in, might as well do the whole shebang. I, I don't know. We'll, we'll see what, see what happens. Um, yeah, so we meet here, we walk to the store, then apparent, I guess we walk back here. I mean, I think might as well just walk up Recreation to Recreation Road, it's not that far.
Well, and also it gives, I think you should, because it gives a feel of.
How you have to manage that turn, that curve.
And the narrowness of the road.
And then, and the whole experience of that road, yeah.
It's like it's supposed to be kinda sunny and nice, so that would be more likely than rainy and cold.
Nine, we're doing it nine to eleven, yeah, cause last week was that, I guess last Wednesday was the day that it just poured.
So the other thing I noticed is uh. That we could also request bump outs, like Bethel's got, I keep, every time I drive through the area. You know, talk about narrow little places like our village, they have those bump outs now. I, I know we hate them, but at the same time, they do make people pause.
You know, I have to say, I drove to Bethel today and as I left the village, there were two V Trans. Vehicles that must have been going fifty. No, I was heading southbound, they were going northbound and I was down by Tuffers. And they had to be going fifty. I mean, they were flying by me.
Thoroughly enjoyed doing thirty and holding people up. I, I actually have been enjoying it and it's amazing how. They're right up behind you.
They, they go forty, all the way up one ten and they never change, they never hit the fifty. That you can do, you know, which is fine, you know, but it's like, uh, my. You know, I only operate at forty miles an hour, so I drive everywhere at forty or forty-five miles now, village, you know. Out where there's nothing, you know.
What surprised me is right after the flood when they were hauling. Hauling materials up to Chelsea. And the side of the road, the trucks, the dump trucks going through here. Really were hauling and there were a lot of them and they were not doing the speed limit. And that's very surprising, cause they're CDL. They're held to a higher level of accountability.
Again, tell you, um, Rogers, K L Rogers truck, Benson's truck. They put their big names on the side of it and so. That, that's who I watch going up and down the road at speed. And um, yeah. And I know that they're, you know, they're trying to move as much material as they can. But, you know, it's two tenths of a mile, if that. And to slow down, you know, I'm preaching to the choir here, never.
It, it is, there is a little less and I, I caught myself coming into town, forgetting until, you know, just daydreaming. And I'm a little slow to get there.
And then also.
Get to Judy's for like.
Going down the hill, right? So I started out, I mean, from my house you start, I started out and all of a sudden. Yeah, you go down that hill, you don't really have to have your foot on the gas pedal to be going forty. Pretty darn soon, you know, so I do, I, I catch myself, you know.
But those bump outs are something to think about too, if we end up having like no money. Even if there's grants for a sidewalk, but they're, most, what people can't forget is they usually want in kind. You know, and right now the town's gonna be a little tapped. But the least we could do is ask V Trans for, you know, to address some bump outs.
Yeah, crosswalks, some signage, signage step, all those things, all those things can be part of the whole total package. And as um, Rita told me the other day, she said. Cause I'd said, you know, I've been talking to a few people and they always want, you know, they think that this means there's gonna be a sidewalk. And I said, no, no, that's not the way it works. This is to look at the feasibility. Of a sidewalk and what it would mean and how, you know, all the different things we'd have to take into consideration for a sidewalk. And never mind cost, but all the other stuff.
No, don't do that. People are, I'm, I'm being asked that, that's a big one, people wanna know the cost.
Well, they don't, but you, you don't even know what the cost is gonna be till you break it down and look at all the different pieces. So that's the first thing that happens. We're scheduling a October seventeenth um, meeting at the town hall. For the engineers to talk about the process. And as Rita pointed out to me, there wouldn't even, even if everything went great and money was available. Nothing would happen probably till twenty twenty-six. So you're not talking about, this is not like we're do the study and then next week they start working.
I, I actually understand it, but I have, I think the cost is what's scaring people, cause we, a lot of us are aware of Chelsea had to re. They'd been putting off and talking about and putting off and talking about repairing the sidewalk. And I was told by um, the EMD in Chelsea, she said, how much it costs us a foot, because now you have to be. You have to be ADA compliant and all this other stuff. She said it was over like three hundred and fifty bucks a foot.
Well, okay, but I also look at this idea of a feasibility study for sidewalks to include all these other ideas we've been talking about. So it's like we call it the sidewalk scoping, but that doesn't mean it's like. All sidewalks or nothing happens at all, that there's all these other. And so we might. Stage it or start with some of those very lower cost options and. Yeah, I think, I just think that's the information gathering is. I do agree with Brenda that it's good to walk and that you should walk the whole thing if they're willing, you know.
Cause there's only so much you can ask the landowners right now, they're being told. You know, it's a meager amount, they're cutting into it.
Okay, well, I will. We'll let you guys know what happens. And everyone's welcome to join, as far as I'm concerned, there's no. Ooh, that we can go. I think we should have a little.